Identify themselves for the record by standing and stating their name and address. Is there anyone here wishing to do so?
Amanda Forstman.
Is there anyone else wishing to disclose? Seeing none, I'd ask Councilor Boishman to please lead us in the suite of the class.
I will do that. Mr. President, I'll wait until everybody stands up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct your oral call?
President Kuschmerich.
Present.
Councilor Boishman.
Present.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deena Tally.
Here.
Councilor Donley.
Here.
Councilor Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Cattie.
Here.
Councilor Squallia.
Present.
Councilor Walsh.
Present.
Councilor Zerella.
Here.
Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you're addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Mark Rollo. I live at 456 Pearl Hill Road in Pittsburgh, and my medical practice is also in Pittsburgh, where I've practiced for the last 27 years. And I'm here to speak to the petition that was submitted by Counselor Fleming about, I don't know the number on the agenda, but a petition to regarding physician-assisted suicide. And I'm asking the city council to, at some point, vote or vote on a resolution to oppose physician-assisted suicide. As you probably know, this keeps coming up year after year after year, and we've defeated physician-assisted suicide in Massachusetts year after year after year, including 2012, when it was a ballot initiative. So it's going to continue to keep coming up, and I think it's very dangerous legislation. It's dangerous for many reasons, but the main reason is this doesn't give patients the right to die. They already have the right to die. They can withdraw care, they can go to hospice, they can go to palliative care. We have great hospice and palliative care in this state. This legislation is not about giving patients the right to die, it's about giving doctors the right to kill. And that is very dangerous, and that was recognized 2,500 years ago, when Hippocrates in the Greco-Roman world, it was common for physicians to kill their patients. If they couldn't cure them, they'd kill them. And Hippocrates realized that their patients would not trust them if they had the power to kill them, and so he penned the Hippocratic Oath. And in the Hippocratic Oath, it says, "I will not," it says specifically, "I will not give a deadly potion to a patient, even if asked, nor will I suggest such a thing." So the reason I bring this up now is because a recent approach or a recent tactic of the pro-suicide lobby is to go to individual city councils and try to get them to vote in favor of assisted suicide, any way to move the ball forward to get this eventually passed. So affluent towns like Amherst, Northampton, Cambridge, Lexington, Falmouth, Provincetown, these towns have their city councils vote in favor of assisted suicide, and studies show that it is the white, wealthy, well-insured people who are in favor of assisted suicide because they get another choice. They have the wherewithal to pay for their own care, but they want that extra choice to have their doctor prescribe them 100 sleeping pills to go and kill themselves. But it is citizens like in Pittsburgh, you know, lower-income people, people, you know, minorities, people who are disabled, they are the ones who are going to be steered towards suicide. And this has already happened. It sounds absurd, and it sounded unreal to me when I was first aware of it, but this has already happened. For instance, in Oregon, where physician-assisted suicide passed 20 years ago, more than 20 years ago now, there have been cases where people have been denied care but given suicide pills. There was a woman by the name of Barbara-
Sorry, I just asked you to start to conclude your comments.
Sure. So this particular woman had metastatic lung cancer and was, wanted expensive chemotherapy. It was denied, and she was, Medicaid sent her a letter saying, "We'll pay for your suicide pills." So Pittsburgh, in the 2012 ballot initiative, we voted against physician-assisted suicide, whereas places in the more affluent part of the state voted in favor of it. So I'm hoping that you'll help and vote against physician-assisted suicide, vote on this resolution to protect the citizens of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Just before the next person approaches, I'd just like to remind folks, at two minutes or at the, what I'll do is at the two-minute mark, I'll tap my pen loudly, just asking you to begin concluding your remarks. That's it. Good evening.
Evening, councilors. Thank you for listening to me this evening, Mayor Deena Tally as well. My name is David Tibo Munoz. I live at 51 Longwood Ave. I'm also an instructor at Mount Wachusett Community College. I'm here to talk Tuesday about 04418. Is that correct? Last night, this petition was before the property committee. I wanted to first thank Counselor Deena Tally, Counselor Fleming, and Mayor Deena Tally, Councilor Zerella, and Counselor Joel Cattie for recognizing the importance of this history, the history of abolitionist movement as it connects to Pittsburgh, and have said that something needs to happen in terms of, like, it being publicly recognized. I'm disappointed, however, in the decision of the property committee to motion to withdraw the petition for a lot of reasons, one of them being that hundreds of people, voters in the city, support the petition, have publicly come out in support of it. Over 50 students have participated in this project and doing the research, not just on the history, but also on the neighborhood. We have, the Board of Park Commissioners asked us to create a Friends group. We currently have 44 members. There have been 48 people in addition to that who have participated in the project. Those 50 students that I mentioned all did 10 hours of community service toward this project as part of their class. We have over 230 people like us on Facebook publicly. These are some people that you might be familiar with who have supported the project. Last night, we had Shirley Wagner, who was our former vice president at Pittsburgh State. We also had Mark Badanza, who founded the Drake House in Leamester, city councilor there, Pete Capadaglie, Silas Dobson, Jennifer Jones, David Streb, the former planning director, Bob Campbell, Ivan Roman, and Lania Thomas, who all own properties, rental properties in the college area, Adrian Ford, Ruby Hall and her church, The First Church of God in Christ, on Snow Street, Elmer Eubanks, Helen Obermeyer Simmons, Ellen DiGeronimo, Kristy Frank, student at Pittsburgh State, Dr. Danette Day, Stacey Montgomery, Kate Geier, Mayor Lisa Wong, former mayor, Simone Blank of the Tar Hill Group, Emily McCray of the Faith-Based Coalition, Lisa Williams, advisor at Donna Bonora, instructor at Pittsburgh High School.
Mr. T. B. Munoz, I just ask you to begin to conclude your remarks.
Okay. So I guess the thing that baffles me in terms of the decision is that we have all these people who want to take care of the park, who want to see this happen. I hope that we can find some resolution. We're going to continue to work on this, whether it's purchasing, figuring out a way to purchase the lot and make it private, or going, there's a HUD lot on Wood Street. We hope that we can get your approval either there or maybe some other private route. I just wanted to come here to say that I hope that the people in the government in Pittsburgh, city councilors and mayor, will support whatever the next step is and whatever it is that we decide to do, because this history is obviously important to the people of Pittsburgh and to the people of the region. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. Mayor?
Elmer Eubanks, and I guess I'll try to be brief. I don't want to rehash what everything was said, but also on the item 04418, I'd like to maybe propose a compromise with the neighbors, possibly take a look at maybe having the parking be part of the, you know, tenants, I mean, not the tenants, but the owners of the property abutting it, and the park be constructed next to it, so that there could be a compromise there. So I don't know if that solves the problem, but maybe, you know, having a conversation with them and seeing how we can parcel off those parking spaces, maybe they don't become part of the city, but become part of the landlords that are abutting that area, and they have a couple of spaces for their tenants, and also then have a parcel out for the park, possibly. So just a compromise idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Evening.
Hi. Josiah Richards, I'm at 199 Fisher Road in Pittsburgh in Ward 5. I just want to speak in support of petition 14418 for a pocket park in Ward 5B on Day Street. You know, the students have done a lot of great work, I think. I've only lived in Pittsburgh nine years, and the information they've garnered has taught me a lot more about this city, and I think longtime residents have also learned a lot about the city through this project. I think a park like of this kind in an urban, dense neighborhood is what neighbors need. And from the few community meetings I've been to with David, I have seen some community support. I think just given the hours of these meetings and the lack of public transit, it's harder for some constituents to get here, so I hope that my voice might represent some of those residents. So I think there's a great opportunity here to recognize the history and the abolition movement that's right here in Pittsburgh, and I'm sure there's a great compromise and come up with some local parking with the adjacent little park in front of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll resume the agenda. Now we hear a report from the Committee on Records. Councilor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order. Do the Committee on Records report be accepted?
Second. I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. First, Mr. Richard Sarison, as a member of the Capital Improvements Commission, for a term to expire on September 1st, 2021. For Ms. Lola Hamilia, as a member of the Pittsburgh Cultural Council, for a term to expire October 1st, 2021. And for Mr. Harold Sheed, as a member of the Board of Assessors of the City of Pittsburgh, for a term to expire January 1st, 2021. Those will all be sent to the Appointments Committee. We also received an additional communications, Honor of the Mayor, on September 26th, to your honorable counselors. I'm writing to your honorable body in reference to petition 04418. I would like to commend the students of Mount Wachusett Community College for developing such a plan to preserve and highlight our local history. They have shed light on the important, on an important moment in our past and the important role Benjamin Snow played in our local and national history. Certainly, we must find a way to celebrate his legacy and serve as an inspiration for future generations of Pittsburgh residents. While I appreciate the students' advocacy, I am curious if we might be able to find a more appropriate compromise to celebrate Mr. Snow's historic impact. I do not believe 116, 118 Day Street is an appropriate location for a pocket park. Our economic development strategic plan, which is yet to be fully endorsed by this body, does indeed identify pocket parks as a possible intervention in strategic areas. That being said, I'm not only concerned about the feasibility of such park, I am particularly worried that strategically, this may not be the best location. The proposed location is just a short distance away from the Joanne Mama Fitz Memorial Park, formerly known as Green Street Park, and an important neighborhood gathering place. Further, we would anticipate pocket parks, if any, to be located closer to the downtown or neighborhood commercial districts. This project is located within a residential neighborhood with two homes directly abutting the proposed park. This configuration brings several challenges into question, such as struggles with visibility, lighting, and would invite public safety concerns. Furthermore, as the council is fully aware, we must think long and hard about maintenance of our existing parks and maintenance of any new additional park. Although I wish we did not have to view it so simplistically, but for every park we support, we have to consider the effect that it will have on the maintenance of other parks. Currently, the city has more than 40 various parks. Every spring, it is an overwhelming task to get our parks ready for public use. Our DPW currently has workforce challenges, and to take on the maintenance of any additional park is extremely cumbersome. The city's maintenance dollars must go to upkeep, maintenance, and improvements of our current parks. If the council decides to commit expanding our public spaces, I would hope so only if it is clear and sustainable, if there is a clear and sustainable plan for maintenance and funding over time. I am not convinced that this would happen at this site, and worst, I am still worried it would diminish from the capacity needed to keep established parks properly maintained. To that end, I am open to hearing other ideas on how we might celebrate Benjamin Snow. This group of students has already taught our community so much about our city's history, and I'm sure that they have much more to teach. But I hope that we can think of an alternative plan that celebrates Mr. Snow in a way that does not place additional burdens on city services and produces potential public safety hazards in our more residential neighborhoods. Respectfully, Steven L. Deena Tally, Mayor. I believe he's on file with the city clerk's office. And lastly, other communication from John Bosk, attorney-at-law, regarding reference petition 22418. Counselors, I believe this was in your packet as well.
Could we ask the calling inspector, he did move the cars on that lot, but all the trash and debris is left. It looks horrible on that corner after all the money we spent on River Street. Could we request that he picks that up?
Absolutely. We'll send the communication to the Commissioner. Thank you, Councilor Cattie. Moving on to the agenda, City Property Committee Oral Report, meeting of October 1st, 2018. Councilor Zerella.
Okay, City Property Committee met last night at the airport conference room. We had a number of petitions on the agenda. 0718 from Counselor Boishman to look at the possibility of putting in a roadway that connects to Crawford Airport Road area to the Summer Street area via land or right-of-way to be acquired. This would be to alleviate traffic backups that would occur in the Bemis Road area. That was held. Counselor Paul Boishman and City Solicitor Pusiteri to petition the city council to authorize all actions to ensure that the property located at 150 LaGroce Street be provided access via public ways. It appears the city will be required to cause a survey, obtain an appraisal, and perform a taking by eminent domain. That was leave-to-withdraw by a three-to-two vote. And I'm sorry, the previous one, I believe, was unanimous. Sorry, four-to-one. Then, let's see, we have a petition 04418 to postpone the listing of the vacant lot at 116 Day Street for the side yard sales program and explore the possibility of creating Pocket Park to honor Pittsburgh abolitionist Benjamin Snow. That was given leave-to-withdraw. That was four-to-one. We have petition 24318, Solicitor Pusiteri, to review the provisions of the side yard sales program to determine whether an amendment should be made to the side yard sales program so that merger of the side lots with the abutting parcel of the purchaser is not required or is not required in all cases. That was held. A.J. Terigny, Chief of Staff to the mayor, to declare Zero North Street as surplus property and sell same to the FSU Foundation Supporting Organization Incorporated for the amount of $1 as outlined in the petition. That, by the way, is 24418. That was approved three-to-two, I believe. Sorry, let me just double-check my vote tallies. Yeah, that is correct. And then 24618, Counselor Amy Green, on behalf of the Pittsburgh Historical Society, to remove the deed restriction in place for said deed book. 2142, page 178, for the parcel, parcels located at Grove Street and Vine Street. That was approved four-to-one.
Just to clarify, 038-18 was three-to-two?
That's right. Thank you. I apologize. I misspoke.
Motion to approve Committee's report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the City Property Committee Oral Report. Speaking on the motion-
On the motion, I'd like to pull 038-18, show the record that I disapprove of what they say against 02, I mean, 224, 244-18, and 246-18.
And on the motion, I'd like to pull out 044-18 as well.
All right. So this will be dependent upon the counselor who made the, Councilor Cattie, are you in a bowl?
So you want to take them one at a time?
I think that's probably the best way for us to handle this, just to avoid any confusion.
All right. Motion to approve the report of the Committee on 03818.
0718.
Sorry, I have those out of order. 00718.
I have a motion, motion and second to approve 00718. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve 03818.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 03818. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Deena Tally.
To clarify, when you say approve, you mean adopt the Committee's recommendation?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a motion and second to adopt the Committee's recommendation on 03818. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Two in opposition, Counselors Squallia and Boishman. Motion carries.
Motion to approve Committee's recommendation on 04418.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Committee's recommendation on 04418. Speaking on the motion, I first want to praise the work that both the petitioner as well as the students who worked passionately and tirelessly over a long period of time for this. And I absolutely recognize and agree with the intent of this petition, which is to honor the legacy of a great man and an abolitionist and, you know, a great figure in our city's history, and feel strongly that we need to move forward with the intent of that petition. In my mind, I think we need to separate out the location from the intent, and here I look at and say, this is not the right location, but this is absolutely the right intent. Earlier today, after hearing about the Committee's recommendation, I spoke with the mayor, and I fully commit, and I won't speak for him, but in our conversation, we committed to moving forward with that intent, forming a working group along with our city's commissions for either the historical society or the historical commission, but bringing some folks together who are part of this effort in trying to find the appropriate. The mayor informed me that he'd provide some suggestions for appropriate areas where we could provide physical recognition along either the Main Street or North Street corridors. So I think in many ways, we can bring more attention to the legacy and the impact of this great figure in our city's history. So I think I don't, in any way, shape, or form, want the students or the petitioners who are involved in this process to feel that this was a defeat in any way or a loss. I think in many ways, you've elevated this issue so that we can bring it and immerse it in a much more notable way throughout our downtown, so that it's not just several residents in a neighborhood that see it, but our entire city and visitors who come in. So I think this is a wonderful thing that came forward out of this, and again, I applaud and appreciate the work that they did, and you will have my commitment that I'll be there to work with you from this point forward. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Squallia.
I'd just like to note, you know, that I've been involved with this, with David Munoz and his students and the entire crew, working with this pocket park for about a year-ish, yeah, a little over a year now. And I love the concept, and I love the enthusiasm and the incredible work that's been done. And, you know, the idea of a pocket park in a neighborhood like on Day Street, I personally think is, and it's not only appropriate but needed, because, you know, there is an adjacent parking lot, a large building over, and I see it being run down. There's, you know, weeds growing within this parking lot. It's very un aesthetically pleasing, and I also see children using this parking lot as a makeshift kind of yard, because there is, you know, there's a lot of large multifamilies on Day Street and not a lot of yard opportunity. Whereas, you know, there are street parking, and obviously, a parking lot would be beneficial to the landlord of the area. This proposed pocket park compromised with a reduction of a six-space parking lot to a four-space parking lot with the park that was dedicated to the abolition of slavery and Pittsburgh's historical significance in that role. And having a living monument, you know, an actual park dedicated to that as opposed to simply a plaque in another park, kind of gives you that immersive experience and that opportunity to really get involved and learn the history with, you know, incredible community support behind this. You know, we've had professors, you know, as Mr. Tibo Munoz noted, you know, very high-ranking people in our community that have supported this, and not only that, but at every meeting that I've been to, City Property twice, Parks twice, and even the city council, the overwhelming majority of the people speaking and attending are in favor of this park, and passionately in favor, so much so that they've created a, you know, a nonprofit organization that's fiscally agented through the Three Pyramids and have organized that really well. And so, you know, I personally think that this is a great location, but I'm glad to hear that, you know, there is a citywide kind of push, there will be, you know, if this is given leave-to-withdraw, that we can create this and honor this in an appropriate way as David has and has, his class has. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the Committee's recommendation on 04418. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zerella.
I'd like to first just second everything that President Kuschmerich said. This is, this has been an amazing effort, really, I mean, I voted against it, against this particular plan, and I'm going to again, but not because I am not sincerely impressed by all the work that's gone into it and very much in favor of accomplishing the underlying goals. Where I came from on this was the existing abutting tenants. I had a communication from one who has not been able to make any of the meetings because she works in Concord, but she also communicated to me the concerns of her fellow tenants, which are not that this is a bad park or anything. She thought it was great. She just didn't want a park outside her window, or, you know, literally, right outside her window. We're not talking across the street. We're not talking one lot over. We're talking, open your window, stick your hand out, and you're pretty much in the park. That was my major concern about location, is it's a congested neighborhood, it's a small space that butts right up against residential spaces, and so you're going to be upsetting the tranquility of residents' experience in a very imminent way, even with perfectly, I'm not talking about anything bad, I'm talking about perfectly upstanding parkgoers. There's noise associated with enjoying yourself outside, and if that happens during dinnertime or whatnot, just outside your window, as close as I am to Counselor Walsh, then that's a significant disruption. I do, I did greatly appreciate the modification of the plan to include parking in response to some of the concerns that were raised. However, there's issues of liability, damage, you know, having parking spaces right next to the entrance to a park where the parking spaces are not for the park but for private use. private use, you're going to, you're going to risk scratches, dings, whatnot. And it is a a mixed-use space like that has liability concerns for the city as well. Um it it's just, it was always a practical problem for me, not an ideological one. Uh and I think that's the case for, I think I can say, based on what I heard last night, that that is the case for the other committee members who voted against as well. And I echo President Kuschemerik and councillor Squalia in saying that I do sincerely hope and sincerely support this uh project going forward in a tangible way uh at a more appropriate location in the city.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? One in opposition, councillor Squalia, motion carries.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the committee on two forty-three eighteen.
I have a motion and second to approve the committee's recommendation on two forty-three eighteen. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition?
Motion to approve two forty-four eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve two forty-four eighteen, uh the committee's recommendation on two forty-four eighteen. Speaking on the motion, one, uh councillor Boishman.
On the motion, councillor Donnelly said there was one person that was against this. I'm not against the university, I want to make it very clear. I'm against the simple fact that we got over four thousand square feet, and they say he's planning to take an adjacent lot right next to it, which is going to bring us up to over nine thousand square feet, which is a buildable lot. And these two lots combined is worth a lot more than one dollar, a lot more than one dollar. I keep on hearing from numerous councillors all the time, we are not a rich community. We're not a rich community. And there's only so much land, the guy above gave the city of Fitchburg, and we just can't keep giving it away. So I'm voting against it, I feel that way, I feel the piece of property is worth more than one dollar. I also feel that if we combine the both lots together, when the city takes it over, we got over nine thousand square feet, somebody may want to come around and put something in there, maybe a storefront, who knows? But that's how I feel, and that's why I'm voting against the way I'm vote, I was voting.
Councillor Walsh, I failed to recognize you before councillor Boishman.
Oh, no, I I'm just, I'm gonna have to recuse myself from two forty-six eighteen.
Okay, understood. Uh councillor Zarella.
Um I'm just going to reiterate what I said last night, which is, if this were a different location, councillor Boishman would have a very good point. Uh if this were not sandwiched directly between two parcels that are already university-owned and that are already used for parking and so forth, then a nine thousand some-odd-square-foot lot may very well be attractive, even despite the increased difficulty in building there because it would still require a special permit for an undersized lot. Uh but in this particular location, we're not going to get the kind of money for it that we could get in a different location. Could we get some? Maybe, but honestly, the relationship that this city has with the university, as we were discussing in the economic development uh council as a whole meeting uh previously this evening, is worth the few thousand dollars that we could possibly squeeze out of this this lot.
Councillor Squalia.
Uh so, you know, I'm a big supporter of the university, and I and I love the development that's going on there, but you know, this, but these two particular petitions came right after a lengthy discussion in City Property of our sideyard sales programs and modifications that may be required to it. And right now, our sideyard sales program, you know, uh these are lots that might be directly adjacent to so, to someone who owns a house. This person's been maybe maintaining this lot, uh and the lot is a small, low-value lot that's unbuildable. Um and this would be something that the city could put into sideyard sales program and would be a, like a three hundred dollar fee for the adjacent property owner to buy it and combine with their units. And the problem that we have, you know, is uh we're talking about raising those prices, especially in the City Property Committee, what we were discussing was potentially raising the price of those to seven hundred fifty dollars or two thousand to twenty-three hundred, twenty-eight hundred, something like that, to cover whatever costs of a title search and that sort of thing. And then directly after that discussion, we we have a, you know, a a petition to to give away a, you know, lot of low value to um both uh the university and to the Historical Society. And the perception of that was just concerning directly, especially directly after this discussion, the sideyard sales. And, you know, that lot is, and one other concern was, you know, that lot right there is a parking lot, we do have a park right there, and perhaps maybe there was some agreement with the university that we could have a few parking spaces that are allowed also for city parking, for the park adjacent, you know, would be a, there would be less of a perception that we're simply giving things away, and that's all on two forty-four eighteen.
So I I look at this petition and say, you know, there are, there are certain nonprofit organizations that are strategic partners with our city, uh that impact us in multiple ways, whether it's through economic development efforts or public safety efforts. This is an organization whose future uh and very being is interwoven within the fabric of our city. Um and if we're concerned about, you know, always trying to reap a reward for every act of partnership that we have with an institution, I would say that it, we're always going to be uh charging bills. And off the top of my head, and in the past, you know, year, I'd point to the university paying for lighting in city neighborhoods, sidewalks in city neighborhoods, um particular areas of paving, mutual aid uh responding to um police uh and public safety concerns throughout the city, as well as feasibility uh studies throughout our downtown and for traffic areas. So I look at that and say, I think we've gotten a great return on investment for our relationship, and I don't think um I would want them sending a bill to City Hall for the services they've provided us. And I guess with each one of those, and my point is that there's usually a reciprocal act, it's usually part of something greater, uh that we as a, as a strategic partner with them and they of us uh engage in. And I would say that um this is, this is a uh, this is a property that is of, one might say, strategic value to them, but um I I think this is, this is more about showing um our partners uh how we operate in business, and um I I don't see a need for us to charge um excessive value, because then I'd be concerned that they would do the same, and and that's, um I don't think that's indicative of a, of a good and healthy partnership. Thank you. Uh councillor uh Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um if if people could remember what the neighborhood looked like in the fifties or sixties or seventies or eighties, or even into the nineties. Uh North Street is the most transformed street in the city of Fitchburg at this moment. It might be the prettiest street in Fitchburg. Um the new lighting, the things that they've done, the buildings they've, in order to make a small park the size of the lot that we are discussing, they have had to spend a hundred, two hundred, sometimes three hundred thousand dollars to purchase a building, and another thirty or forty thousand to demolish the building, and then another could be four, five, six thousand dollars to pay them, to make parking. That's one of our requirements, isn't it? We want parking for students and housing. Um in the late seventies and early eighties, um the playground was at the intersection of North and Pearl and Clinton Street. And it was an organization, the College Neighborhood Association, with probably thirty, forty people that participated, and we got the playground moved to what we thought was the center of the neighborhood. That would make it easier for the people from Pearl Street and from Main Street, from Highland Ave and Blossom Street, to go to the center of the neighborhood, hopefully avoiding any need for a car. Everybody should be able to walk to the center of the neighborhood. Now, I was very happy to see it named Mary Fitz Park, but there was no mention of the organization, all volunteer, one hundred percent that was inspired and funded by community development. Uh the amount of money, i-if there's a focus in the city on a town gown and trying to get Fitchburg State students and faculty to Main Street, we shouldn't be letting a little piece of land that almost, I don't think there's anyone in the room, and I don't think there's anybody watching that could come up with an idea of what you could do with that little tiny lot that would improve the economic value, the beauty of the neighborhood, the beauty of the street. Um and I think Fitchburg State has bigger plans than any of the the people that would disagree. So I I cannot see any reason, and I I do agree, and I did talk to councillor Squalia, and I ca-talk continuously to councillor Boishman about value in raising, raising the prices for pieces of land, but this does not make any sense. We should be, we're partners, we do so many things together, it's a, to me, it's a non-
Councillor Zarella.
Um I'd just like to note that because this is going to come up again on the next petition as well, I suspect um this is distinct from the sideyard sales program. When uh we do have these close partnerships, so, yeah, we we kind of are giving this land away, but that's because the amount that we could squeeze out of it at market rate would not be comparable to what these institutional partners of the city, A, can do with it, and B, have given us. Um this isn't like just offering a parcel to a landlord or offering a parcel to uh, you know, someone who wants to build on an infill lot or something. That's different, we should be getting full, uh as close to value as we can for that. But the these two issues, the the university, the Historical Society, they, we want them to succeed, they want us to succeed. If we can give them a notional few thousand dollars, because remember, we don't have a few thousand dollars in our pockets from this lot, that's just the amount that we could maybe squeeze out of it on the open market, if we can give them a notional few thousand dollars to help their continuing transformation of our downtown area, let's do it.
I have a motion and second on two forty-four eighteen.
Mr. President, just very quickly, if you if you don't mind, um I I just wanted to, there was a concern about the title issue um with this particular parcel of land, I'd like to remind councillor Squalia, as I mentioned last evening, the way in which this city took this parcel of land through Land Court cleaned the title. There were, there were three options that the city can enter into when going through tax possession, and the option that we took for this particular parcel uh back in the late ninety, uh late eighties uh was through Land Court that issued and rendered a clean title, so there is no issue with title on this particular parcel of land.
Thank you. I have a motion and second on two forty-four eighteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? Two in opposition, councillors Boishman and Squalia.
Motion to approve uh the recommendation on two forty-six eighteen.
Uh councillor Walsh is recusing herself because of a familiar relationship with the organization um on two forty-six uh eighteen. That said, I have a motion, do I have a?
Second.
And a second uh to approve the committee's recommendation on two forty-six eighteen. Speaking on the motion, councillor Squalia.
According to the deed.
Councillor Squalia.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, um so, you know, I have no problem with with the lifting the deed restriction on the corner property from, so the the proposal here is the Historical Society, the old Historical Society on Grove Street wants to sell their property, and the adjacent property is owned by the Historical Society, which is that corner kind of lot with that horse trough planter, and the city of Fitchburg owns a deed restriction on that, saying that if the Historical Society sells this property, it goes, it reverts back to the city of Fitchburg. Um and so the the proposal is to remove that deed restriction, and I have no problem with this, uh the Historical Society has located its base of operations from Grove Street to Main Street, and uh I'm, you know, that there could be a better use of that property. But I would just, I'm concerned again with the perception of the city, uh, you know, enriching a nonprofit corporation or any corporation really with uh with real value city dollars, and um also with the legality of that, I I had a concern with that, and that's, that's why I voted against that.
Councillor Boishman.
Basically, she said, the way I was gonna say it, the deed says that it reverts back to the city of Fitchburg. The reason why we want to revert, they want us to revert, retract the deed so they won't have to come back to the city of Fitchburg for the piece of land, they just get it automatically, and that's why. Well, I don't like to give things away.
Councillor Caddy.
So the reason that the Historical Society wants to do this, because right now, they're maintaining two buildings, and the Historical Society can't afford to do that. Um so in order to sell that building, which is a beautiful building in a, in a very nice location, next to seventy-five million dollars' worth of development going in that end of town, the reason to lift it, because we can't, we can't, I'm not on the board anymore, so I can talk, uh they can't sell the building because they don't have parking. So if we lift the restriction, the building would, we can bring parking to that building, which makes it viable to sell. When the building sells, the monies that's gonna be had is gonna go into the second building on Main Street. Right now, they occupy two floors, but we have five floors, but no money to renovate the five floors. So so this plan is to take the monies, develop a piece of property, if we don't, if it doesn't get sold, it's gonna sit there forever in a beautiful location, it's it's gonna look like a black hole in the middle of this beautiful area, but the monies they make is gonna go into our building to renovate the floors. So that's the reason, I can't see any reason why the city would want that parcel for anything.
Councillor Caddy, councillor Donnelly.
Thank you. This is another case where a building needs parking, and this is what the city wants, we need parking, it's gonna be used. If they, for the amount of money we could get for the individual lot, which I don't believe is big enough to be built on, and take it away from the Historical Society, from a marketing perspective, how much money does the city spend on marketing itself? And the Historical Society, one hundred percent of what they do is marketing the city. It's marketing the history of where it was, where it's been, it just markets Fitchburg. How much do we pay the Historical Society to market our city and its history? So, uh what are we giving away? As councillor Caddy just said, the money is going to be to improve the main building on Main Street. So it's, it's helping the city market itself. I think it's taking a restriction away. You would reduce the real estate value of the other building substantially more than the value of the land you could ever get. It's, it it's working to hurt the city of Fitchburg if we don't do this.
Councillor Zarella.
Um I have to, I feel like I have to respectfully but strongly disagree with uh the concern about perceptions. We are benefiting these, uh this nonprofit organization. Uh we are, it's, you know, it's not just a perception, it's reality, but it's not a perception that anyone should take issue with. Um there is nothing improper about a city government having a partnership with a local nonprofit whose sole purpose for existence is directly related to the city. Uh that's, that's not a problem, that's not improper, it's nothing shady, no shenanigans, uh it's all above board, we're telling everyone what we're doing. Um and it's also, again, I I can't stress enough, it's not a large amount of money we're talking about. This lot without the building attached is worth practically nothing to us as a city, and if we were to extract market value from the Historical Society, number one, that hurts the Historical Society- hurts the Historical Society, their budget is a lot smaller than ours. And what's a drop in the bucket for the city budget, a couple thousand dollars, maybe, what did we say, like 2,000 or so maybe for the lot? In the city budget, that doesn't go far. In the Historical Society budget, it's still not massive, but it's bigger. So, what would be the point? Would hurt the Historical Society, make it harder for them to operate their excellent service to the city on Main Street, where not only do they promote the city, as Councilor Donnelly said, but they also act as informal supplemental city archives. They have elements of the city's past that don't exist anywhere else. And they do that without charging us a penny. So, if they're coming along and saying, can you throw us a bone here? I say, yeah, sure, sure, throw a bone. You know, if people have, if people take issue with that, if people think there's anything improper about that, I am more than happy to stake my, you know, my credibility and my reputation on that.
Councilor Boishman.
I want to get it clear, one thing clear. I'm not against the Historical Society. I'm not against the Historical Society. And if the city wanted to give this piece of land, then why in the deed did it say it reverts back to the city? If they were that concerned, then it was the Historical Society then, and it's the same Historical Society now. Why didn't it just say, this land goes to you? There was a reason why they put this in there. I didn't put it in there, they were just done, Councilor Stein, Jeff Bean was the mayor, I'm not the one. If the land had low value, low value, and it meant nothing, then why did they put it in the deed? That's all I want to know. I have to answer to the consensualist of Pittsburgh. It says here it reverts back to the city of Pittsburgh. That's what it says. And that's all I'm saying. If it's that important, I'm only going by what I read. I did my homework, they tell me to do my homework, I could do my homework, and I bring it up.
Councilor Boishman, I'll have to consult with the Historical Society, and if they have the records that show that justification. I would surmise, though, that at any time you put a deed restriction on something, you, there's uncertainty in the future, and you're saying, we don't know what will become of this property, so we want to make sure that we have a say in it. We can now look back and say, after all said and done, this is the right move for our city, we're not losing a strategic value in this that will jeopardize the future of our city. We're not. They were giving us that mechanism to make sure we were evaluating the decision. We are, we have, and this is the right thing to do. Councilor Zarella.
On that note, I would suggest, my speculation on the same subject was that perhaps the city at the time was concerned that not, that the Historical Society might move and sell the building, but that the Historical Society might cease to function, and if it did, we would want to be able to reclaim that property and get value from whatever private entity was taking the liquidated assets of the defunct Historical Society. Clearly, that has not happened. The sale money is not going to go into the ether somewhere, it's going to go to the currently vital Historical Society, which will benefit the city, probably more than whatever the city could do with that same money.
I have a motion and second to accept the committee's recommendation on 246-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? To and opposition, Councilor Squallia and Boishman. Motion carries. Council as a whole, committee oral report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 254-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? Motion carries.
Mr. President, with apologies to Councilor Taddy if you're in Belgium, I'd like to move to accept the Public Works Committee report.
Second.
Could you hold out the last one, because, hold on, the very last one, which will be 261-18? I have to recuse myself as I'm related to one of the-
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report of September 25th, 2018, excluding 261-18. Speaking on the motion, Councilor Boishman.
On 038-18, I got to get leave to withdraw instead of being held. Because we did vote on it before, on copy.
Are you amenable to such a request? Excluding 038-18 and 261-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Motion to approve, uh, motion to amend.
038-
He wants to change it to leave to withdraw. Okay. Motion to amend 38-18 to give leave to withdraw.
Second. I have a motion and second to give 038-18 leave to withdraw. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? To and opposition?
Motion to approve as amended?
I, we just simply gave that leave to withdraw.
Oh, I thought we just amended it to give leave to withdraw.
We'd be amended with committee's recommendation.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Move 261-18 be granted, second.
Councilor Taddy, did you need to recuse yourself from this?
Yes. Want me to leave? I know, I know. Mike, Mike.
I have a motion and second to approve 261-18. Speaking on the motion?
On the motion?
On the motion, Councilor-
It should be 52 Old Deerfield Road.
52?
It was amended-
Yes, you're right.
Prior, but it's not showing up correctly here.
Madam Clerk, do we need to amend that as it is, or just note it?
I'll just note it.
Okay. So, I have a motion and second to approve 261-18, noting that it is 52 Old Deerfield Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Move for suspension of the rules on 262-18.
262-18, order that the Pittsburgh City Council does hereby confirm its affirmative vote on petition 245-18, approving the vote of the Pittsburgh Contributory Retirement Board, taken on June 26, 2018, to increase the supplemental annual allowance from 6,000 to 12,000, provided to the surviving spouses of accidental disability retirees who are unable to provide any annual allowance to be paid to their spouses at the time of their death. I have a motion and second, all those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those in opposition? It is unanimous, matters before you-
262-18 be granted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to grant 262-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Move 263-17 be sent to finance.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 263-17 to finance. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Motion for suspension on 264-18.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 264-18, order that the city clerk be authorized to notify the voters of the state election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those in opposition?
Motion to approve 264-18.
264-18, I have a motion to, and second to approve 264-18. Speaking on the motion, Councilor Boishman.
I just wanted to say, I read in the paper, in, or in some way, I think it's a note from you, that you're going to change one of the locations at polling time in Ward 5, temporary. Is that true?
That is incorrect. That is not correct.
No, it's not correct? Oh, okay, I thought I read that somewhere.
Just so there's no confusion, can you clarify where the polling location is?
The Ward 5 polling location is at Sima Park.
Still at Sima Park?
Yes, it is.
Even at early voting, too?
No, early voting is at 700 Main Street. That's for all locations.
718, yeah, right now, that's what I meant. I'm sorry about that, I get you confused.
Councilor Squallia.
I just wanted to note that, you know, a lot of Ward 5 residents noted to me that they, for this last election, the primary, they tried to go to MART, thinking that there was going to be a transit opportunity to Sima Park for the lot of Ward 5B walkers that cannot walk all the way to Sima Park. And those buses were not running after, I don't know, 12:00 PM. And so, if just there is an opportunity to work with MART, to have, you know, a shuttle bus to shuttle from MART downtown to Sima Park, I think that would be really helpful for the Ward 5 voters.
Councilor Gina Tally.
Mr. President, the clerk already sent an email a few days ago, already stating that that's what they're working on.
I have a motion and second to approve 264-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Motion to send its third and final reading, 242-18.
Second.
242-18, I have a motion and second to send 242-18 to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
We have one in opposition.
One in opposition, Councilor Boishman. Thank you, I apologize. And 265-
Move 265-18 be sent to Legislative Affairs Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 265-18 to Legislative Affairs. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, announcement?
I've just got a few announcements for the viewing public and for the people here tonight. Holiday Decorating Committee will be holding a pasta dinner fundraiser October 10th, 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Senior Center, tickets are $5. Again, that's for the Holiday Decorating Committee and the cost of doing that. Trick or treat on Main Street, October 27th, which is a Saturday, 12:00 to 2:00 PM. And then holiday hours on 10:31, 5:30 to 7:30. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, re-adjourn, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor.